But if there are any, if you would like to speak on a specific agenda item that are the part of the public hearings, we will have opportunity to do that at that time as well. I will go ahead and close that public comment portion, and we will move to the consent agenda. Are there any comments, questions on the consent agenda?
I wasn't here, so I can't say anything.
One question, I guess, on the, we're moving the December 6 meeting, will the second meetings, or will we not have a second meeting in December? Okay, gotcha. Good deal. I didn't figure we would, that it would fall right on the week of Christmas. All right, any, any further comment, questions?
Yes, sir.
Then I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I do have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. All right. Looks like, I guess, we don't have any items for individual consideration today, so we will move to Section 5, the public hearings. We'll start with Item 5A.
Thank you, sir. Item 5A, receive a report, hold the discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a replat of Lot 6R-1 and 6R-2 for the Mariner K Estates, Phase 2 addition, case number 2022-099RP. This is the location of the property. It's located in the ETJ, at the corner of Hannah Drive and, I guess Hannah Drive up there by Diamond Point, the condos for Diamond Point. And here is the proposed replat. Oh, sorry, I went through that kind of fast. And the purpose of the replat is to create an additional lot. Currently, it's just one, and they're wanting to split it into two. Staff recommends approval of the request. And I'm present for any questions you may have.
Any questions of staff?
For example.
All right. Would the applicant, is the applicant here?
They are here, if you have any questions for them.
Would the applicant like to add anything to this?
Do you want to add anything?
No, okay. Or any, any questions of the applicant?
No.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak on this request? Then I'll close the public hearing portion of this item. Any further discussion among commission members?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposed replat.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I second that.
I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? None? Motion is approved. We will move on to Item 5B.
Item 5B, receive a report, hold the discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request to the City of Dennison Code of Ordinances, Chapter 20, or, I'm sorry, Chapter 22 subdivision regulations, Article 4, requirements for public improvements and design, Division 6 Park Facilities, Section 2022-99, Parks and Open Space Adequacy, subsection B, applicability, sorry, and exceptions by amending the number of dwelling units required for, applicability, app, I'm showing my Oklahoma education right now, of Division 6 Park Facilities, case number 2022-112ZO. Miss Mary Tate.
I apologize, that was a long description for a short item, so. Current regulations right now state that park dedication fees shall be collected when 50 or more dwelling units are to be built at the final build-out of a project. We're proposing that amendments would reduce this number to 25 dwelling units because we are seeing a lot of developments come in around the, like, 30, 45, 46 lot or dwelling unit size, and so we are not capturing those park dedication fees to help with our park maintenance and park expansion, even though we are still having those residents use those facilities. So we are making a request that that number be reduced from 50 to 25. The, the amount will remain the same, it's just reducing the number of dwelling units. So it's always $500 per dwelling unit after 50 or more units for a specific development, so we're just asking that that be reduced to 25.
Does that apply just to, to multifamily too, or is that?
That is for multifamily and single-family developments.
Yeah. Any questions of staff? All right. Would anyone else, would anyone like to speak on this request? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing portion of this item. Any further discussion among the commission members? Sounds like a good action to take, is my opinion. All right, I will entertain a motion then.
I move to recommend approval of the amendment request to Chapter 22 subdivision regulations as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? That motion is approved. We will now move on to Item 5C.
Item 5C, receive a report, hold the discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request to abandon right-of-way within the Eisenhower birthplace consisting of street and alley sections of Lamar Avenue, West Shepherd Street, and West Day Street, case number 2021-100ROW. This is the layout of the Eisenhower birthplace site. I think we're all pretty familiar with where it's located. The applicant actually came before staff sometime last year and has been discussing the abandonment of right-of-way for these streets and alleys for quite some time, and they are requesting this in order to move forward with some planned developments that they have for the site. There's quite a bit of information in your packet as to what those developments are. I didn't call them out specifically, but it will be an overall improvement to the site and provide better education on the birthplace for Dwight D. Eisenhower. Staff is recommending approval of the request. I'm present for any questions that you have, and the applicant is here as well.
I'm especially interested in that area that's going where the statue is. I think it's going to be a lot of change. I would like to hear that, what the applicant has to say about that particular area.
Are there any other questions of staff? Nope, all right. Mr. Akers, you want to, you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chairman, commission members, my name is John Akers. I am the site manager of the Eisenhower birthplace. I reside of 423 West Gandy in Dennison. And so this, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. We developed a plan about 10 years ago to improve the interpretation and make other improvements to the site for accessibility, physical, and also to the, the story that we're telling there. And some challenges that we were dealing with was that when people come into the site from the north, they come into a parking lot, they see a lot of buildings, they're not sure which one is the Eisenhower birthplace. It's hard to get there from down, through the tunnels. So we thought we'd like to route people down Crockett, come in, have a new entrance at Shepherd, and so right off Crockett and come in, and then move the statue to that cross-street of Shepherd and Lamar as a way to pull people in. The plaza where the statue is now is 50 years old, it's tired, it needs to be replaced. And then as you're coming into the statue, the first building that you see as you enter is the Eisenhower birthplace, so it answers the questions. So that's what our plan is. That would be the central focus point of the site, having that gathering point. Traffic would enter off Shepherd and then go down Lamar Park on the street there or into the current parking lot.
I think it's going to be a big improvement. I know you've been working on other improvements for many years. A lot of that 10 years, you haven't been just sitting there. They've provided the new gardens and a lot of other things, so I think this is great.
Are there any other questions of the applicant?
I guess one question, the, the old way of getting there, will you still be able to get to the birthplace, the old way or not?
You will. I mean, I think we plan to encourage people to enter off Crockett like one way.
Right.
And start on Shepherd, go to the visitor's center, then when you leave, exit through what is the current entrance. I mean, that's, that's a plan for flow. We think it's just going to be easier for people to find it coming off Crockett versus the way they get in there now.
Sure. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more thing to add. Typically, when you have right-of-way abandements, you, the city receives compensation for those right-of-ways because this is a state entity and they have eminent domain powers. This is an exception within our code, so there will not be a transfer of funds between the state and the city. They did provide us an appraisal, and I think that's within your packet, however, I just wanted you all to be aware of that.
So legally, sometimes they do a transfer of $1? Is that, but we don't even need to do that for this one? Okay, cool.
All right. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? We did receive, I guess, two letters or a letter and an email. I'll go ahead and read those off. One of them from Barbara Simpson at 105 East Day Street, says, that's opposing it, said it would be nice if the city would fix all of the ditch way at the back and front of my house. I have asked, because my house gets water in it when it rains, the city will not help nobody on Day Street, so why should people on Day Street help them? It is sad, it is so sad. And I have, do have a note, I guess, the Public Works Department is going to be contacting Ms. Simpson to looking into her concerns. Don't believe Ms. Simpson is here. And then one from Mr. Greg Davis. I am the owner of the property. Within 200 feet of this zoning request that would affect my property, I just received this notice in the mail less than 24 hours before the hearing that is scheduled for 10:25, 22 at 10:00 a.m. I am in opposition to this request to rezoning due to the lack of time to review their request. There has not been sufficient time given to get information regarding this change. Please advise on this situation as to my options to get more information prior to this rezoning change. And I have a note, I guess, that Felicia did speak with Mr. Davis this, this morning and explain the right-of-way item. Is that correct? Okay. Is Mr. Davis here?
No, he could not make it through the conference.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right. Any other, anyone else like to speak on this before I close the public hearing portion? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing portion of this agenda item and entertain any discussion among commission members, or any further questions?
We're good.
Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of the request to abandon sections of Lamar Avenue, West Shepherd Street, and West Day Street, as well as the adjacent alleys as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? That motion is approved. We will move on to Item 5D. Several requests.
Item 5D, receive a report, hold the discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request to amend multiple sections of the zoning ordinance as described below, tabled, and the public hearing continued on 9/13/2022. Applicant, City of Dennison, case number 2022-096ZZO. The request to amend Section 28.30 MF1 and Section 28.31 MF2, Section 28.49 Use Regulation Chart and related sections to remove duplexes and single-family attached townhouses as allowed uses in the zoning districts. Request to amend Section 28.21 Single Family 20, Section 28.22 Single Family 10, Section 28.23 Single Family 7.5, Section 28.24 Single Family 5, Section 28.25 Patio Home, Section 29.29 2F2 Family Duplex and related sections to amend the required minimum front yard setback and add design requirements for garages with doors that do not face the street. Request to amend Section 28.3 PD Overlay District to add requirements for design standards and the formation of an architectural control committee for certain residential developments in this overlay district. And I request to amend Section 28.32 Manufactured Home District and Section 28.49 Use Chart and related sections of the zoning ordinance to amend the standards for manufactured home parks, including lot sizes, setbacks, parking requirements, design and construction standards, and operational and maintenance requirements. Miss Mary Tate.
Okay, so that was a lot, again. It's not quite as lengthy as last time when Ms. Gerald was here to present the eight zoning amendments that we were presenting on that day. But if you recall, we brought before you eight amendments on September 13th, and we asked that you, you table these four so that we could consult with our city attorney to get some more guidance. So first off, the first one, as it was written, you'll notice in your staff reports that we had to keep the language the same because that is how we noticed for that initial meeting. So while the language is the same, we do have clarification on that, so it will change a little bit. So the first one is remove duplexes and townhouses as allowed uses in the MF1 and MF2 multifamily residential zoning districts. We were, there are three options within your packet. However, after consulting with the city attorney, only one is truly allowable or by, by law, because we don't want to ever get into some type of fair housing situation. So I'm just going to review that one because that would be our staff recommendation, and the other two really are not applicable after consulting with the attorney. So what we are asking for is clarification that duplexes and townhouses within the base zoning districts of MF1 and MF2 meet the specific requirements of those districts. So we're talking about lot sizes and things like that, minimum setbacks, and things of those nature, of that nature. We also want to make sure that the lots of record that are already platted are, are conforming use as they should be because they are lots of record and are already platted. So this is what we're recommending after consultation with the city attorney. So the clarification would be that the builder would have to replat lots to meet the minimum 2F lot size of 10,000 square feet or 100-foot minimum lot width for duplexes. Townhouses could only be built on properties five acres or larger in size. So we were trying to find a middle ground, and we think that we're successful in bringing this about. We just have to make sure that the lots are platted properly and that they meet the requirements of those base zoning districts. Are there questions on that part?
So for, so any townhome development would have to be at least five acres, is it?
That's correct, or larger. Yep.
So the, just as an example, the one that's where Crawford turns from Bellos, those are townhouses, right?
That is a planned development.
That's a planned development.
That's separate. That's different.
So you could do it, you could still do townhomes on smaller than five acres because our PD is two acres?
Yes, so if we take that route, but that's kind of irrelevant to this conversation based on the base zoning of MF1 and MF2.
Right, yeah. So this is just if it's zoned MF1 or MF2.
Correct, yep. Okay, I'm going to move on to the next, next one, if that's okay. For homes that have J-swing garages, we are looking to reduce the front yard setbacks. So a J-swing garage means that you pull in and the garage is on the side, it's not facing the street, so you're swinging into the garage. We are suggesting that there be a setback to 15 feet for the J-swing garage and that the garage face, the garage wall facing the street not just be blank. There needs to be something there. So it could be a functional window or a non-functional window, or shutters, or something like that, but there does have to be a design element on that front wall. And this would be applicable to all the single-family zoning districts, the patio home, as well as the 2F, which is two-family duplex district. Any questions on that one? Okay. The next one would be that we require standards for residential design and require an architectural control committee for enforcement in larger planned development overlay districts. So when we have PDs that come through, we want to make sure that they are putting forth an architectural control committee to monitor the kinds of homes that are built within that planned development, so that we get some variations in what those homes look like or what the townhomes look like. So we are asking that they present us with a design, what we called it, a design, a pattern book, so that there's a minimum of four different kinds of elevation, so that you're getting some variation, and it will regulate the pitch of the roofs and incorporate other things such as the number of stories, what the front entrances look like, whether they're porches, columns, things of that nature. This does not go against what the legislature put out in stating that we can't require certain materials be used, but we can ask for this to be written within the PD ordinance. So again, this one will just ask that a control committee, an architectural control committee be put in place to enforce what is being built, as well as the pattern book being presented to us at the time of application. Any questions on that one?
So are there 25-acre developments that don't have that bit coming?
We just want to make sure that we are doing our part on the front end, and then we also have to make sure that we're holding the developer accountable. They have to issue a letter to the builder stating that that is in place, so when they come to their permits, to get their permits from us, we have to have that letter stating, yes, we've looked at this, the architectural control committee has looked at it, and that they're okaying what the builder is coming to us for, for their permits.
So those are just concepts at that time?
Those will be approved within the PD, so they're not concepts. When they get, they've been approved, and when they get to the permitting process, they have to build that kind of design. Yep. Any questions? Is that clear? Okay. Okay, the last one is amending the regulations for the manufactured home zoning district. Really, what we're looking at is just standardizing the requirements regardless of whether or not spaces are individually owned or leased within the mobile home district areas. So we just want to make sure that we're keeping things to the standard that we would like to see them, so that we can give the best quality of life to the individuals within the manufactured home districts. Right now, the major change includes an increase in the lot or space width from 35 feet to 50 feet, increasing the minimum floor area of the manufactured home from 400 to 1,000 square feet, and a reduction in the maximum size of a mobile home district from 35 acres to 20 acres. Right now, we only have two properties in the city that are zoned that way. One is operating as a manufactured home park, and the other is vacant. So I see some surprised looks. So there may be some others that are operating in areas that are not zoned that way. Any questions on that? We are making, wanting to make sure that those districts include quality of life things such as open space and making sure that the amenities that should be there to improve quality of life are also included.
Any questions of staff? All right, this time I'd open up the public hearing portion of this agenda item. Nothing from you, Mr. Shear?
Just sitting there laughing.
I know you're laughing at, that's what's, that's what I did.
Charlie Shear, 415 West Main. Actually, I want to commend staff on the improvements, and I mean that, improvements. I think once this goes into place and the building community gets comfortable with it, you're going to see a great improvement in our built, in our built community. There's a lot of, of homes that have been built, don't get me wrong, I'm glad to see them because we have increased our tax base and we've made improvements to infill districts, but there's a lack of creativity on the part of a lot of what's being built. And so I think what we're, what we're seeing here and the changes that have been made will improve that, will change that, and I think that it's going to make Dennison a more attractive, a more attractive city. So I commend the staff and I fully back them and support them on, on these changes.
Thank you. I know somebody who's been championing for having the design elevation, no repetitive elevation changes for a few years.
Quite a few years.
Anyone else like to speak on this item? Then I'll close the public hearing portion of this agenda item and ask if there's any further discussion, questions among commission members.
I guess, I don't know exactly how this new part for the manufactured homes applies to the conditions we've had to look at before. If there's, what we, the way we're looking at it before, if the mobile home existing was not repairable, they were not allowed to put a new home in that place. They had to fix the one that was there. So I guess where's, where's the line in those existing places of, you can't make amenities where there haven't been? So how do we, how do we deal with those that are problematic, I guess is what I'm asking.
So that comes down to code compliance, and that was something that we were weary of stating within this ordinance. We did discuss it, so that is something that we will work on with the code compliance department on how to enforce certain things. But you are correct in that we, we do have some other stipulations in there regarding how to improve those areas. It's just not applicable to this particular section, and it's working with the other departments to make sure that we are all on the same page in doing so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Good additions.
And I would entertain a motion on this agenda item.
We need to remove it from the table first.
Yeah.
I move to remove case number 2022-096ZO from the table.
Second.
Have a second on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right.
I move to recommend approval of the proposed amendments to the following sections of the zoning ordinance as submitted, Section 28.21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 29, 32, 43, 49, and 63 as presented.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? That motion is approved. We will move to staff updates.
The only staff update I have is that we will be kicking off those comp plan updates as I mentioned last week, or two weeks ago, to all of you. So be looking for that during the first week of November. I'll be sending an email out to you. We have an internal staff meeting on Friday to talk about making sure that we have all the departments that need to be present there with any concerns as we move forward with comp plan updates.
And are we, when are we having the second part of the training? Is that set?
Thank you. It was going to be after that meeting, however, I'm going to use that time for the comp plan discussion with all of you. So then we'll do it.
So then we'll do it, let's plan on, the 12th, right? The 6th? The 6th. December 6th.
December 6th.
December 6th.
All right. Is that it for?
That's it.
Okay. All right. Now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Good job. We have a first motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We are adjourned at 10:31.